I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order for Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Before we get started, I wanted to recognize the person tonight. This is Jason Liggett's last evening at the helm behind the scenes of our Urbana City Council meeting. Jason's been with the city since no, uh, full-time since November of two thousand and fourteen, or two thousand and seven. He started as a part-time camera operator earlier that year. Has worked for the city for the past fourteen years. He is now the Urbana Public Television Station Manager. Throughout those years, he has mentored hundreds of students, members of the community. He helped them learn how to use the equipment and produce their own shows. He broadcasts sporting events at the Urbana schools. He's been unfailingly professional in achieving excellence in everything he did. And we especially appreciate his efforts over the past twenty months when we, we shifted to remote meetings and Zoom and the workload intensified in the past couple of years. So I just wanted to express our appreciation and our thanks for his many years of service and wish him the best in his next chapter of his life. And I know he'll enjoy his Monday evenings. Thank you, Jason, from all of us.
Well, thank you very much. I've always enjoyed my Monday evenings. I don't know what you're talking about. I'll just enjoy them from home now. Thank you.
Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday and Friday evenings.
Exactly.
Thank you, Jason. All right, let's have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. That's November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve. And Darcy, I'm here.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any substantial corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Grace?
Thank you. I would like to add a presentation by Mariah Madison from By Black Chambana to learn more about the organization and see about establishing a relationship. And I would like that to be at the usual spot before public input.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Um, although, let's see, could the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. All right, we'll move on to presentations and public input. Could you please promote Mariah Madison to be a panelist?
Thank you. And can I do a quick introduction while she's coming on?
Yes.
Thank you. Madison, Shandra and I invited her to join us tonight so that we could learn more about By Black Chambana, what they're doing as an organization and see about how we could start to establish a relationship and hopefully partnership, especially in lieu of reducing some of the VCC, EDC stuff by five thousand each with the intention, although not in there yet, for it to go to other organizations in the same field doing similar work run by and targeted for people of color. So we wanted to have Mariah here for presentation. And I think she would need to screen share too. Is that correct? Can you screen share?
Yes.
Thank you. And let you go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for entrusting me with your time tonight and letting you tell you a little bit more about By Black Chambana. I have prepared a video presentation first and then I'll go ahead and talk about how By Black Chambana can directly help the city of Champaign and its residents. Again, thank you for your time tonight. Hi, I'm Mariah Madison, the CEO and founder of By Black Chambana. We are a community organization dedicated to empowering and creating space for all people to celebrate and honor black culture, support black-owned businesses, and uplift the community through our many events, partnerships, and workshops. In two thousand and eighteen, I started my first business, Nannyville. Nannyville has grown to become Champaign-Urbana's premier babysitting service and nanny placement agency. But success didn't always come so easy. Even with a degree in business administration, navigating the road to entrepreneurship was tough. There was no chamber or association that could help prepare me for the obstacles I would face as a first generational black business owner. After connecting with peers and mentors, I would soon find out that those obstacles weren't unique to me. By Black Chambana is home to Champaign-Urbana's Black-Owned Business Directory filled with over one hundred and fifty businesses. More importantly, it is a home and a safe space to those who are willing to advocate for an inclusive community to help bridge the gap. On our one-year anniversary, our goal is to update the Black-Owned Business Directory so that we can continue to make finding and connecting with black-owned businesses as seamless as possible. I am so proud of the strides we have made so far, and I can't thank you enough for your continued support. Awesome. Um, so that is our video we used to promote for our one-year anniversary. By Black Chambana was started in late August of two thousand and nineteen, and it has been a privilege to be operating By Black Chambana for over two years now. So By Black Chambana is a membership-based and online platform connecting consumers with black-owned businesses. Its mission is to strengthen the use of businesses owned by racial, ethnic minorities and to recommend and create opportunities for business development, including mentoring, training, and networking opportunities. By Black Chambana partners with business owners and contractors to help achieve this organizational mission. So what is the purpose of black-owned businesses joining By Black Chambana and what are the benefits? We always say that we're stronger together. So by joining By Black Chambana, a black-owned business can increase visibility, learn from top entrepreneurs, connect with business owners, and have more vendor opportunities and increase sales. But tonight, I'm here to talk to you about partnership. By becoming a partner with By Black Chambana, you can increase your visibility as a community ally, give voice to marginalized people, support culturally-inclusive events, and network and connect with business owners. And so how do we, how do we accomplish our mission? How are we building an inclusive community? And we do that in several ways. That's what the Black-owned Business Directory filled with over one hundred and fifty businesses, with sixty of them residing in Urbana. Uh, we do education and training where we host monthly workshops and offer one-on-one consulting services and business bootcamps to help refine and develop entrepreneurial skills for long-term success. We have our online shop and vendor booth where we feature items from local black-owned businesses and markets throughout central Illinois and online. We advocate and help with policy, so we collaborate with community organizations to address issues and policies that create barriers to entry and growth. We have our social events and festivals. So we host culturally-inclusive events, including our member sociaus, the Urban Market Pop-Up Shop, Two One Seven Black Restaurant Weekend, Business of the Year Awards, and Photos with Black Santa, which I'll tell you more about. And then we also have the Black-owned Business Fund, where we assess funding needs and allocate them towards black-owned businesses that have been affected by COVID-nineteen and systemic racism. Two One Seven Black Restaurant Weekend is an opportunity for the community to support and bolster about black-owned businesses that have some of the most bragged-about menus and truly engaging atmospheres. We do this event in conjunction with Juneteenth. Simply put, we're using food as a force of good while highlighting community culture. We're celebrating black-owned restaurants, celebrating togetherness, and championing inclusion. We do the Urban Market. Historically and presently, black-owned businesses have been denied loans and resources to start their businesses and obtain mortgages and storefronts, especially downtown. In order to acknowledge the years of oppression and obstacles that have created a lack of ownership of property, By Black Chambana hosts the local pop-up market where you can find items from local black-owned businesses. So it's like a farmer's market, but it's geared towards those trending items. And for our first urban market, we got a chance to partner with the CCP, VCC, and also the Chamber of Commerce in support of their Less Shop Small Downtown event. And they were able to create a space for these other black-owned businesses. We also do the Business of the Year Awards, which aim to highlight and celebrate black entrepreneurs and community allies whose work has helped to support inclusion, collaboration, and capacity building with African-American communities in Champaign County. We do Photos with Santa. The, we partner with the Black Fathers Club and host, to host the Photos with Black Santa. Santa is powered by imagination, and we want children to see the fantasy manifesting in someone who looks like them. And we all know that representation matters, not just because black kids need to see it to believe it, but because other cultures need to see us as heroes as well. We also have Luminous Magazine, which is a quarterly print and online editorial dedicated to empowering and uplifting the community through positive representation of the black community, shifting the perspective, widening the lens, and telling the truths that are often untold. Additionally, we love our events calendar. People can post events to the calendar, as well as some of the businesses, the hundred and fifty businesses host events that are usually need help marketing or bring in awareness to so that people can know and attend those events. And we're able to share resources about upcoming workshops with other chambers and associations through this event calendar. So who can be a partner? Anyone. You get some amazing partnership benefits, and you help to create an inclusive community that welcomes and reflects Champaign County's diverse population of people. Sponsorship provides an excellent platform to make an organization's goals actionable. And while packages are customizable to fit the needs of every organization, here are some of the benefits that most people ask and recommend. So we have acknowledgement as a partner on ByBlackChambana.com, posting to the event calendar, being included in those social media blasts, acknowledgement in our monthly newsletter, the quarterly ad in the print magazine, contributing sponsor to By Black Chambana signature events, an in-depth feature in our monthly newsletter, and the title sponsor of one of By Black Chambana's signature events. This is really important because our partners help invest into our mission to being able to create that inclusive business community. I do want to share a testimonial. I have two here, but I know I'm running short on time. And these are two Urbana businesses located here. Mike Wood and Hawk says, "I know Ms. Madison very well, and her journey is much like mine. I think her platform is increasing, and the people are just aware that black culture, though we are individuals and unique, we deserve to have the same platforms and national media attention." Black-owned businesses need to be supported every day, and not just because we're black. It's because we have something of value to offer. By Black Chambana is home to the Black-owned Business Directory filled with over one hundred and fifty businesses. And as I look at the other chambers and associations directory, I can only identify thirty-two of the one hundred and fifty that's in our directory. I ask that you decide to partner with By Black Chambana and help to create space for those other one hundred and eighteen businesses and any other black-owned businesses that may be out there. It is my life's passion to continue to find these black-owned businesses, help them develop, and get the exposure they need in order to create long-term success. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight.
Thank you very much. You have time for a couple of questions from Mariah? Grace?
Thank you. Uh, thanks again for the presentation, Mariah. And I was wondering if you could share a little bit about how the partnership with the city of Champaign looks like?
Awesome. So the partnership I currently have with the city of Champaign, they have the twenty-five-hundred-dollar partnership where they're able to use our newsletter in order to communicate resources and upcoming workshops to reach those extra one hundred and eighteen businesses that's not included anywhere else. And then they also pay By Black Chambana for technical assistance. So we were able to offer one-on-one consulting sessions with established business owners to help them reach operational needs. And we also hosted a business bootcamp for those business owners who are still starting up and helping them to build capacity beyond having just one staff member.
Sharice?
Hi, Mariah. Um, I have a cousin named Mariah. What does your business bootcamp entail?
Awesome. So it is an eight-week training course, and it touches on different topics that business owners need to build capacity, operations management, marketing, and then how to employ your first staff member. And so we actually had some community business owners come up and tell them how they started their business and how they got the capital to grow, and it's really been inspiring to watch.
Um, does it, in, um, because it sounds like something that, uh, your, uh, was it the Urbana Business UBA used, used to also kind of do? So, um, with your partnerships, what I noticed is, um, who? It, it seems like, um, it's ads and stuff like that. Who, uh, what, what other stuff? I don't know if you could show that, that, um, particular part of your presentation again? The screen that had all the, the checks and everything? I was trying to see all that. But, um, yeah. Yeah, so could you, could you give me more information about how that happens?
Yes. So I'm going ahead and bringing up, oh, I'm not sharing my screen anymore. But so how that happens is, uh, it depends on what your goals are and what you are trying to accomplish. We understand that By Black Chambana has a mission, but your organization also has a mission. And so we work within the confinement of what you're hoping to accomplish by piecing together what we can do to reach those goals. So I'm bringing that right back up. And so some of the biggest things is actually being that investor to help By Black Chambana continue to offer the events and the different resources we offer to these black-owned businesses. I do want to let you guys know that we are a limited liability, so we are a for-profit corporation. So we do have staff member, and staff members, and it is, it's costly to continue to do outreach to find the businesses and maintain a directory. So by investing in the, um, business, it helps with that. And then also being able to access those businesses that have no presence. Some of these businesses have no website. Um, so it's really, it's really technical work to be able to help people who are marginalized, who still need to be reached.
Do you, do you help them build websites as well?
Yes.
Is that part of your, um, business bootcamp?
It's not part of the business bootcamp. We do talk about the best platforms to build your business on. Um, because it's just eight classes, we don't get to go in-depth, but it is something that they can work with the agency to get.
Okay, we're gonna move on to James. Thank you, James.
Hi, thanks, Mariah, and congratulations on the success of your business. Um, you mentioned that you're an LLC. Can you share a little bit about when you were forming the, the company? If you considered going five-oh-one-C-three or, or more traditional, uh, nonprofit model where you'd be eligible for grants and donations?
Yes. Um, so when we initially started, it was a grassroots initiative. One of our biggest concerns is, um, getting a grant for one year but not being able to financially stay afloat after that grant surpasses. And so we have stuck with this model so far because it's allowed us to still pay for our staff members, and we would hate to not be able to continue to provide this mission going forward.
All right, thanks. I'm, I'm just curious because, uh, many nonprofits carry staff and are able to move forward with what they're doing and have memberships and so forth. I'm not sure what the, what you keep mentioning that it's a staff trade-off between nonprofit and LLC, and I'm not sure I understand why that's a difference in the circumstance.
I completely understand. So some of the services we provide are not covered. Well, one, if you're making change, sometimes change looks a little bit different than the standard. And if you want something you've never had before, you gotta do something that's never been done before. Um, but what I'll say is some of the state-funded grants, they are only for twelve months. And sometimes they don't cover the services that are needed to help the community. So we couldn't find any grants that would cover the Black Business Directory, but we know it's something that needs to be done. We couldn't find grants to host the events, but we know it's something that needs to be done. So what I did was take initiative, and during the Black Lives Movement, I sold over twelve hundred Black Lives Matter signs, and I used that money to be able to pay staff to get this thing going, because I honestly believe if you build it, the people will come to it. I do think in the future we may transition to a nonprofit status, but my goal is to be able to close the gap and serve the population we need to serve. And if those, if grants will cover it, that will be amazing. But if not, we have to continue to put in the work to be able to serve that demographic.
All right, thanks. I appreciate your perspective on that.
Okay, I think, um, at this point, the next step in this will be to, um, have staff meet with you, Mariah. We need to identify what services you provide, what needs the city still has. We do have agreements with other organizations who are doing some similar things. There may be some overlap, but we can identify, um, possibly where there would be, um, opportunities and partnerships. So we can't take any action tonight. This really isn't a discussion item, but this is a good overview of your organization, and, um, we'll be reaching out.
Yes, I completely understand. Thank you so, so much for taking the time to learn about my organization, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to public input. Alan Axelrod? And as a reminder, you have four minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. So this is going to be a very simple public comments, um, unless if I do a segue to something else. So Champaign-Urbana is a union town. That's what's chanted at all our monthly meetings. I see that the closed session later, if I correctly read the agenda, is probably going to be addressing ASME thirteen-thirty-one. So I just want to emphasize that, um, they should definitely get a fair contract, even if that involves some American Rescue Plan funding to help make that happen. One of the things that I wanted to note when it comes to the contention around doing something, uh, addressing violence, is that, and this is something that I messaged to my alderperson Sharice, Chicago has decided to fund five hundred dollars a month to five thousand low-income households. When you are considering how to use this money, you want to see the benefits directly at the population you intend to affect. So I would suggest that if we are looking at some similar ways to try and address root causes of crime and violent crime, such as poverty, that we try to consider to what extent we could create a similar initiative locally. Also, we have collected and continue to collect petition signatures for the Match the Mill campaign. I was very encouraged to hear how seriously alderperson Mary Alice Wu took five hundred and twenty-six signatures last week. I hope that when we are ready to present to this body, you similarly give the weight to the petition signatures that we present to you. I also want to note that By Black Chambana is great, and we need to very much ensure that the business of this city is respectful of organizations like that. We saw last year, groups more or less do something wrong, then ask for forgiveness later when it comes to the integrity of By Black Chambana's work and what they had done to them. So I just want to say that you should take that into account when looking at supporting By Black Chambana, because they didn't have to do that to them last year. They just didn't. And I think that what the city is prepared to do is actually a very, um, good thing almost in terms of restorative justice, if I were to say that. Uh, one thing that I would suggest for By Black Chambana, I know that there's a lot of work in this, but one of the things that this does, right, is it focuses on black owners of businesses. That is good, but they are also managers. And if we want to consider workers and supporting the workers at a business, even if it is, say, white-managed, but majority black employees, and to have a specific focus on unionized ones that folks could support, I think that that would be a very positive step to making the chant, "Champaign-Urbana is a union town," ring, ring more true. I also want to note, last time I brought up that chant, we saw a unionization drive. Yes, that might be related. Have a good one.
Okay. Next person, I have the hand up, Jonathan Blake.
Hi, good morning, or evening. How are you? How is everyone?
Well, thank you.
I'm here today, uh, for a couple of reasons. Number one, I just want to read something really quick. Jonathan Blake was born September tenth, nineteen seventy-seven, Mattoon, Illinois, to his parents Ronald and Margie Blake. He currently lives in Urbana, Illinois, survived by both parents, one sibling, and three adopted siblings. He has two children. Ladies and gentlemen, that was the beginning of my own obituary. Last Thursday, I became a victim of the shootings in Urbana. And I'm here today because I want to voice my opinion. I want to be seen. I want everyone that is going to listen to know that this cannot continue. None of this makes sense. I am the forty-four-year-old gunshot victim on Bradley and Matthews Avenue. I was a victim of the drive-by shooting. And for what? Why? On Monday, you guys denied the license plate readers. I happened to be in a, what they call a no-stop zone? I didn't know this even existed. I know today. Two hundred and thirty-three confirmed shots fired. My car alone took sixteen more shots. City Council, I want you to check your email right now. I just sent all of you documentation, photos, exhibits, A through Y of the damage that I took on as a person in your community. I've been in contact with Ronnie Davis's office. And you know what he tells me? He tells me that there's already been letters sent to you guys. I would like to request more time.
You have about two more minutes, please.
Okay. Uh, I contacted Ronnie Davis's office. Grace, you're my ward. I, I pray that you can do something, even though you denied it. I hope you find it in your heart to do something. If our police can't do something to protect the citizens, then call in the state police like Ronnie Davis's office has said. Stand up. Get these license plate readers in there. Do what needs to be done. You guys have three and a half years before the next election. I'm not going away. I'm in bright colors. I plan on being loud, and I'm gonna be heard every step of the way. Start your legacy today, not tomorrow. I have to start my legacy today because they tried to kill me yesterday. I know lots of people, and they're going to listen, and this is very emotional for me. No one should have to go through what I went through today or last Thursday. I pray that you guys find a way and make this work, because what if it was your family member? What if it was your son or your daughter? What if it was your son or your daughter or your grandson or your granddaughter? And there's lots of what ifs. But the facts are, something needs to be done today. Not tomorrow and not five months when you guys have time to figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Next up is Linda Turnbull.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm here again, you guys. I had an incident happen where I was going to pick up a young lady from basketball practice and it was like 20 rounds went off about five doors from my house. Again, somebody got shot in the car. Did nobody see nothing? I didn't see anything because I was coming out the door, hallelujah. But right now, we need to do something about gun violence. I don't care what we do, we need to do something, hallelujah. Because people are getting, still getting hurt and we're not doing anything, hallelujah. So another thing is, her name is Sarah Nixon. I do really appreciate last year, I mean, not last year, but last week, for the record straight, she said some things about me and Sharice. And I didn't like that because stuff she said wasn't true. Anytime that somebody takes their time to go out during a pandemic, to get signatures from people, for stuff, to try to help our community, and then people talk negative about the people that's doing all this stuff and work. I mean, if you want to know the real questions about what you need to know, you can call me at 217-550-6189. Or you can text me if you don't want to talk to me and then you get the true story and not to be making up stuff and saying wrong things about people at the city council. Because I worked my heart out to do the best I can for everybody in the community. Hallelujah. Again, we need to do something. I don't know what you guys need to do, but you need to do something to help prevent this gun violence. It's really getting worse and it's getting worse in study more and more shootings. I mean, we're gonna have to come up with something together. We don't have to get on here and talk about each other because people feeling sensitive about what's going on. You just need to appreciate it, respect everybody, what they're saying, and then work together as one. Everybody needs to come to table as one and work out something to get something done for our community. And we don't have to badmouth people that's trying to do something, hallelujah, that is not needed. I mean, everybody have their own opinions. We need to respect them and do it in the right way. And we all need to come together and make this work. Because it takes a village to run a family and it takes many people and many ideas to make this work. And we need multiple tools, multiple tools to solve this gun violence. But anyway, this thing is running out. I wasn't going to come on tonight. I had a real bad headache. But I said I'll come on and get the record straight because my name was just called out there last week and I didn't like that. Sharice, Linda Turnbull and Sharice Hershey, all this stuff is not necessary. We need to come to the table and help find ways to solve this gun violence. We don't need to be calling people out, their names and all that stuff. We don't need to do that. We don't need to make different stories upon people. We just need to do the right thing. And everybody needs to get along and be happy. And that you can't be happy right now because you're pretty stressed or drummed. But do the right thing in Jesus's name. But other than that, you guys have a nice Thanksgiving, what you can have, hallelujah. And put those heads together and let's brainstorm and let's get something done here. Bye.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees, we have one item on the agenda.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
What about council input and communications?
Oh, I'm sorry. Skip right over that. Thank you, Darcy. Next item, council input and communications. Sharice.
Yeah, I just like to, number one, thank Mariah for her presentation. It was very informative and I really appreciate that. The second thing I'd like to say is I'm I'm sorry to Jonathan Blake. I'm sorry that you were caught up in what seems to be a problem that we aren't willing to step out and solve on some level. I don't know why. But I'm sorry that that had happened to you. I'm also sorry that whoever was shot at Carl last week, that they had to undergo, they had to also experience that particular problem. Regarding my answer to Alan Axelrod, and he, you know, was talking about the giving of money and so on and so forth, which is nice for Chicago. They have a larger population, a larger tax base and so on and so forth. I don't, I don't know how a program like that would, would work here. And as far as, and we're not, you know, the, the root problem of crime is not just poverty. Sometimes it's just how one might be prone to the decisions with the decisions that they make. And regarding that particular issue as well, when he says, I needed to look at the, the community that this is affecting. And I'm not sure, I may be, I may, it's not verbatim. I don't know verbatim exactly how he put it. I can't remember. But it is one of those things where I felt like this wasn't about stopping crime. It wasn't about even stopping the gun issue as much as it was about solving and having a foothold in solving who is committing the crime, which is something that unfortunately, Mr. Blake and/or the person that was shot at Carl probably will never have a resolution to. So that's my comments tonight.
Any other council member comments?
I am.
Yes, I'm trying to see everyone on the screen here. Mary Alice.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to let the public and city council know that I've been talking to Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers is a non-for-profit organization. And they have right now an illegal gun bounty reward program. So it was a pilot firm that was initiated on January 10th, 2019. And they give $1,000 cash reward payment to anybody who provides an anonymous tip that leads to the arrest of a person who's used a gun during the commission of a felony crime in Champaign County. So to date, they've had 40, they've had success in 41 arrests. They've been able to remove 54 firearms, including 40 handguns and three shotguns. In my discussions with them, they're interested in raising the bounty to $2,000. And so they currently have a fundraising going on to see if they can increase the gun bounty for that. So that's something that's going on in our community that I, I hope city council will take a look at and, and maybe we can support.
Any other council member comments? Jay.
I want to thank Mariah for her presentation tonight and for the public comments as well. And just to say that I at least have no, no question in my mind that every single person who is part of this council, every person who works for the city is dedicated to addressing the gun violence in our community. We're seeing differences in approach. I don't think that we have to be limited to, to just looking at those big picture projects. There are other more immediate methods that we could take, including trying to implement a Violence Interrupter Program. I'm not saying it'll happen overnight, but that's a model that is evidence-based and it has been researched in, in multiple locations. So I just want to say, even as we are looking at the bigger picture, there's nothing to say that we cannot continue to discuss and work on implementing more immediate responses as well. And that I think it's on all of us to make sure that we continue to work to address this problem, not only in the long-term, but in the immediacy as well.
Any other council comments? Grace.
Thank you. Want to also just reiterate that yes, I agree with the need to urgently address and reduce gun violence. And I appreciate people's inputs and sharing hard stories and hard experiences. And it's something I definitely do take seriously. And you know, like Jay said, yes, want to address and have meaningful ways to reduce that. To explore other options and try and bring some myself. And I also agree with the importance of keeping respect for our fellow community members in our comments all the way around and coming together to address our community problems. I also want to thank Mariah for the presentation and to speak on support for Supporting By Black Chambana. I look forward to staff working with her for seeing how we can make that work. And I hope that council can be involved with an update and possibly input on that. Because it sounds like it is kind of flexible. And I encourage them to explore what she did with the city of Champaign. Because I don't know if that was what someone was getting at with her being a nonprofit, but I don't think that eliminates a partnership. And then lastly, also just want to thank Jason and wish, best wishes on whatever comes next. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my lost connection for a minute there. Grace, you finished your comments?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to reports from the committee of the whole. Grace.
Thank you. Let me if I don't say this right, but I think I say, on behalf of the committee a whole, I recommend for approval, Resolution Number 2021-1-046R, a resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
There's second.
I'll second.
Looked by Grace, seconded by Shandra. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Will?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
And as this is a budget one, mayor, do you need to vote as well?
I don't believe I
Oh, it's not. Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next up is reports of special committees. There aren't any tonight. Reports of officers. Do we have any reports, Carol?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, just a reminder that council priority setting is scheduled for December 2nd and 3rd. December 2nd starts at 5:30, December 3rd is at 6:00 PM. These will be in-person, publicly noticed. And I've been asked to remind council members, if you have not given your food preferences to Kate Levy, please do so as soon as possible. She needs to place the order. And I just wanted to thank our staff members, Darius White, Bridgette Breihan, Rachel Storm, for all they've done to support the development of the African-American Heritage Trail. Some of us saw a preview of that last week and it was, it's phenomenal. It's an effort led by this at Champaign County with a fairly large committee of community members. And it's going to be a tremendous addition to, to the county and I think an attraction, actually a regional attraction. And it highlights and celebrates the contributions and our, our black history in our community. So I wanted to thank the staff and the community members who have, who have assisted in the development of that. Okay, next item on the agenda is a preliminary discussion or the first discussion, probably of several over the next couple of years. But it's of the review of the Black Level 2020 Census results. I asked Bill Brown to take a preliminary look at these. As an introduction, I do have a couple of slides I wanted to share with the council to kind of provide some context. So I'd ask Jason to share the screen. Welcome, Bill.
Hey, hi, council. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm going to start off, Bill.
Oh, okay.
And then, and lead in. So just to give some context for this discussion, the 2020 census was conducted last year. We received the results in June. They've been certified now by the Secretary of State. Our official 2020 population is a disappointing 38,336. In 2020 or 2010, our population was 41,250. So this is a significant decline in the census population. Next slide, please. Typically, after the 2020 census, we'd be looking at redrawing or tweaking the ward boundaries to account for changes in population. This year, we're also considering, or this, following the 2020 census, we're also needing to consider a special census. Next slide. State law requires that we do make sure that our ward populations are quote nearly equal. You can have a variation of up to 10%. We probably will need to adjust some boundaries to reflect the 2020 population. Words are supposed to be as compact and contiguous as possible. It's easier to be compact near campus where we have fairly dense populations as you get out into especially the north and east part of the city where we have very irregular boundaries. That becomes a bigger challenge, but we, we have, we've been very successful in the past. State law requires that a new ward map is approved not less than 30 days before the first day for filing candidate petitions for next election of city officers. Our municipal elections take place every four years. The next election is in spring of 2025. That, that statute requirement is actually the, the very last possible time. Really, our goal would be to approve, make sure we have an approved ward map by the spring of 2024. So that people have plenty of time to prepare for the 2025 elections. Next slide. Considering the drop in population following the 2020 census, we do need also to consider conducting a special census. This is not something that's taken lightly. Last time City of Urbana did that, it was in the early 2000s. And that was following the construction of the Savannah Green subdivision. So some questions that we need to be looking at is number one, are we eligible? Typically, you request a special census if you see an increase in population. In our case, we're trying to recapture population that was lost in 2020 census. We, I believe there's a strong case to be made that a lot of this decline in our counted numbers is the fact that the census took place at the very same time that the University of Illinois campus shut down and many people switched to remote working and learning. And that had a significant impact on the university population and therefore the City of Urbana population. So we have a call into the Census Bureau to make sure we could even do this. A special census is involves money and a lot of work on the part of the local government, which is why you don't take it lightly. The Census Bureau itself collects and tabulates the data for areas that we identify as being areas we want to recount. But our responsibility would be to work with the Census Bureau to help plan the census in terms of identifying the areas. We're responsible for recruiting all the workers and up to five times the number actually needed. We have to provide office space and all equipment necessary to support the special census. And this could be from several weeks to several months. We conduct all outreach in terms of educating the public and promoting the census and advertising that we're doing this. And then the local government pays for all expenses. So we have to, as we consider this, all of these things have to be taken into account, whether the benefits will outweigh the cost of the special census. The special census program resumes in 2023. So we do have some time for preparation and to make this decision. It was suspended in 2018. So, so It was suspended in twenty eighteen. So, so um, looking ahead, those are the um. Both of the things that we're, we're going to be looking at in the coming months. Next slide. Ideally, if we had a perfect world, we would conduct a special census. We'd recapture the population. Or most of it that was lost to COVID nineteen. We'd get our special census results back in time to approve a ward map for spring of twenty twenty-four. And that would set us um, on path toward holding the municipal election in spring of twenty twenty-five. So lots of decisions to make in the um, coming months, but this is just kind of the uh, the high level overview of some of the things that we're facing. And I see a hand up, but I think we'll move on to Bill and take questions afterwards. That's okay. So, hand it over to Bill. He's been, he's been on the block level basis going through a lot of these numbers.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, I think I can share my screen now. Can you see that? Okay?
Yep, we can see it, Bill.
Okay. I, I don't think there'll be too much overlap. We didn't coordinate this. I may touch on some of the same things the mayor did. But um, so I'll just go through, I wanted to go through some slides first showing um, just a little bit about the census. I don't know how much people already know about it. So the different levels of uh, census data and then what we can look at and what we can uh, see from the census itself as far as uh. Uh, changes in the block level data. So um, there's three main local um, geographies that the census uses. The largest is a census tract that everybody's probably heard of. Typically, that'll be um, about four thousand people. I gotta move the zoom out of my way here. Yeah, about four to five thousand people, although it can vary. Anywhere from three to eight thousand, something like that. Usually in Champagne County, they're four to five. Um, then the next level below that is called the block group. So that's uh, it's a little bit smaller areas. There's usually three to five block groups in a census tract. Um, in Champagne County, there's a hundred fifty-eight block groups. These lines do get um, changed a little bit every ten years. Every um, census, they give the local like Regional Plan Commission, I think usually coordinates it. And uh, they have specific uh, criteria that uh, they use to adjust track lines. So sometimes, you know, when there's been additions to a city, a tract that used to be all country is getting too big and um. It's, they try to divide it up a little bit. And that did happen this year, a little bit more than um, it did the last time, the last ten-year census. But the block groups is where you, you also see used in the community develop, development block grant program. That's what the little map is there. So those are the target areas that a lot of our C D B G money can go to, but those are based on block groups. And then the final lowest level is actually the census block. So those are uh, defined by physical boundaries, roads, railroads, rivers. Uh, anything that actually you can make a polygon out of, so that there's no doubt about which block group somebody's in because they're either on one side of the street or the other. So that's, that's the lowest level that we get the numbers at. Um, and for the decennial census, oh, and then, yeah, the census blocks are also used to do the, to build the wards. So you can uh, I'll talk a little bit toward the end about um, a tool that you can use online. To actually add blocks to wards and take them off if you want to play with the, the map itself. So the decennial census is what we just finished um, in twenty twenty. And it's a full count of every residence every ten years as of April first. Um, so it doesn't ask a whole lot of questions. The main things, the, the results you get out of it are the number of people. Um, age, race, ethnicity, and relationship to the householder. And that's it really. Um, so all the data you see about um, economic data, media, median family income. People in proper, in poverty, employment, enrollment in school, commuting, all that um, comes from a different survey. And those also aren't shared at the block level. Because they aren't statistically significant at that level. They're shared at the larger levels, the block group or the tract levels. Um, the other thing, in twenty twenty with the uh, with the block level data, we have to kind of be conscious of. When we're looking at the fine resolution data is they do add some noise to it. Um, that's because they found that um. By combining the census data with some commercial databases and other surveys, it's, it was too easy to identify households. And um, so in order to protect, protect privacy, um, especially for blocks that don't have a, a large population. They actually add noise to it, so uh, it can result in some improbable results. So you may click on a block and it says uh, there's, you know, four housing units with uh, thirty people. And all of them are under the age of eighteen. So, so you can get some things like that. But as you accumulate blocks to develop larger geographies like wards, that noise tends to cancel out. That's the way they designed it. Um, it's a really sophisticated way of um, protecting privacy. And it's a little bit different than they used ten years ago. That, ten years ago, they actually swapped data, but they kept the numbers the same. This time, they've actually introduced noise, so the numbers change a little bit too. So you can also end up with people living in places where. There's really, there's like one apartment in uh, you know, some, some commercial building or something. You might have twenty or thirty people. In the census, but it's not there. But all that noise goes away as you, as you um, grow the areas, so it, it can't cancel us out. Um, and what was released this year so far from the, the decennial census is called the redistricting data. So that's a subset of what will eventually be released um, in the coming months and over the next year, they'll be releasing more. Data at the block level that um, refines the age categories more. Right now, we just have under eighteen and over eighteen. Um, so it'll be a little bit more refined. They'll also do some data quality checking. So the other survey, um, I just touched on because we're not gonna be looking at this kind of data, this A C S, American Community Survey. And the way that works is about one to two percent of all the households are supposed to be surveyed every year. And they get what we used to call the long form about twenty years ago, when people uh, actually got two different forms when they did the census. And that asks a lot more questions about income, employment, and all those things. Um, and so then they publish a five-year rolling average. Every year, a new um, average comes out. The most recent one is twenty nineteen, but that covers years twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. So it's a combination of all five years in order to increase the sample. So you have a sample of about seven to ten percent, probably more uh, more like seven. The response rate, especially the last couple of years, has been going down. Um, so that, that data uh, also includes a margin of error because it is statistically sampled. So it's, it's not as accurate. So as long as uh, you use it at an appropriate geographic scale. You can get pretty good data. It would be inappropriate to try to use that at a block or even sometimes a block group level. Um, so this year, this year, the, with the redistricting data, we get the counts um, for housing units. And, and housing units are one of the things that they don't mess with as far as adding the noise. So the housing units that they um. Have provided us for each block should be accurate. Urbana has eighteen thousand three hundred seven housing units. That's actually down uh, by quite a bit from last year, by almost a thousand. I mean, from ten years ago. And I'll show some reasons why that is. There was uh, probably a, a pretty significant error in the census last year. That was pretty well known at the time. Um, but our group quarters cut uh, total is also down. That's mostly because I S R, um, will be looking at that too. Um, there's other categories, there aren't huge differences that the uh, well, that. Juvenile facilities, I think they used to count something that they aren't counting anymore. I'm not sure exactly what that would be. I'd have to check on that. The only other thing, the correctional is down some, but I think that might be back up now. So here's some different, I mean, these are the ones that the mayor talked about, the forty-one thousand and thirty-eight thousand. They also do an annual update. Um, that's again, a statistically determined estimate. Comes out every year that they do from the top down. So they look at migration and uh. Uh, births and deaths and migration basically at the state and county level. And then they distribute it down to the local level based on other known attributes of, of local data. So the most recent estimate was forty-two twenty, forty-two thousand two hundred and fourteen. Um, and we think, or I think that that's probably gonna be closer than, than what we were given. Um, if we do, if we do a good recount, um, we'll probably come out somewhere in between those two. Um, another thing to think about is how the enrollment at the U of I has changed. Um, starting in twenty seventeen, the U of I changed the way that they report enrollment. They used to report on campus separately and now they put everybody together. So I made two different, a discontinuous graph for that. Um, so I, Mary Alice may be more familiar with the, the differences, but um, I assume that all students includes like a lot of online enrollment. That may or may not be local. So I just uh, put in some trend lines so we could try to guess where uh, the on-campus enrollment might be. It also varies quite a bit between spring and fall. Um, normally the census is, well, the census is always uh, supposed to be based on April first. So that would be closer to the spring enrollment if we did a recount and it happened to be in the fall, that might be to our advantage. So some of these things, I think the mayor already talked about, uh, the census count. Question resolution was one, um, I, I don't, actually, I don't remember if she talked about that or not, but. There's a row, narrow criteria for allocating population. That if there, if basically there's a technical mistake and somebody misnumbered a block and this actually happened in two thousand, somebody put. Um, somehow the, the people that were counted at one of the F A R um, residents halls ended up in Fuzland. And it was pretty obvious when the numbers came out, so they actually were able to correct that. Um, but it took a couple of years to work its way down through the census data. Uh, but that was something they could do without charging us and that was something that um, would qualify under this program. Uh, as far as I know, we haven't been notified that we're eligible for anything under that and it doesn't look like um, they're going to. I thought originally they might try to get some kind of um, pandemic impact for university towns to fall under that. Um, but it doesn't look like they will. But we should know in theory by the end of the year whether the, we'll be able to qualify for anything under that. Then the other thing is the special census that um, the mayor's already talked about. We would, uh, Urbana would have to reimburse the Census Bureau for costs and help recruit the census takers. Uh, have to provide office space and everything. The account itself is real similar. Um, they, the uh, form looks the same, still have to fill out the same information. And it could, can still be done online. So if we do a good job of uh, getting people to do it online, that might help reduce costs. Um, and it's often used to catch new construction. We do have some new construction that you'll see in the maps. And uh, can do a fuller partial recount. This is the numbers I got from Elizabeth today. Can, just to show how much money uh, we're potentially losing by not counting people. Um, so this was the annual estimate total due to the twenty-nine hundred people that um. The population decrease. It comes out to about two hundred twelve, um, maybe two hundred fourteen by the time you get the library per capita in there. So about two hundred and fourteen dollars per person per year. So if we get a recount done and say uh, in a couple of years, it'd be good for six years. Or seven maybe, um, you can figure about twelve hundred dollars um, per person over the six years. So then when we're looking at places to recount, you can think about, you know, how much it would benefit. So example one, I S R was well below capacity in twenty twenty with towns enclosed in Mordell, not as desirable with no cafeteria, I think. I don't remember which year they closed the cafeteria. The, the likely count would probably increase the block total by at least five hundred and benefit at least six hundred and forty-two thousand over the six years. So that's an example of um, you know, it, it can definitely pay to recount. Then another example where you'd have to um, kind of think about it a little bit more. We had the new Pinewood Place, the new affordable housing complex in Colorado. Twenty-four new one-bedroom units, but the census blocks also includes more than seven hundred people in several large apartment complexes. With normal fluctuation of their occupancy, there might not be any guarantee that twenty-four additional people would actually add to the block's final recount. Um, and plus the recount may cost more than the potential thirty thousand dollar benefit over six years. It probably is a lot more expensive um, to count, to count more people uh, in a lot of different apartments. So unless that was a real heavy student area where we thought, you know, there might be another fifty or a hundred people we could pick up there. That would be one we'd have to look a little bit closer at as far as uh, the cost benefit goes. So a couple, a couple just uh, slides about changes in it. Um, the race data that we've gotten so far. Um, so the African American population, I think in twenty-ten was around sixteen and a half percent. This is showing it at eighteen point nine. If the uh, undercount is mostly U of I students. That would probably drop this figure a little bit because U of I students are not, not as uh. Not as diverse as far as African Americans go as uh, Urbana as a whole. So it's probably somewhere around seventeen and a half percent, something like that. Asian population probably hasn't changed a whole lot. And Hispanic and Latino probably hasn't changed a whole lot. Um, this is three maps from two thousand to twenty twenty showing uh, both population density. And racial diversity. So each dot on these maps represents three people. Um, so you can see the dense areas in near campus and then the um. Blue is white, red is black, green is Asian and yellow is other race. Other races are often chosen by Hispanic populations, um, but also a lot of Middle East and Northern African people. So that was, let me go back, two thousand. Twenty-ten. Twenty-twenty. Um, and just one map for the, on the wards, a couple of maps maybe. Um, so the preliminary accounts on the ward population, uh, if you need to target, if you divide the, the. Twenty-twenty population by seven, you get five thousand four hundred seventy-seven. So Ward one would need to add a little bit. Ward two would need to add a lot. Ward two, three would be taking a little bit away. Ward four would be taking some away. Ward five would need to add and six and seven would need to subtract. And there's a tool online called Dave's Redistricting. Um, I know some people from the county board were using this when they redid their map. The school district is gonna make this available to the public too. And it's, it's already up. I mean, I gave uh, Wayne the blocks. That are in each ward, so that's all you need really to uh, upload a map to Dave's Redistricting. And so I've copied his, this is a copy of Urbana Current. He has one called Urbana Current that he published. And then you can just go in there and, and change it if you want. So that's probably uh, something we'll make available to people if they want to try to. Change the map themselves. Uh, let me go back here. I didn't mention. Uh, and Dave's also does quite a bit of analyst, analysis with voting patterns. I just put in uh, the three most recent elections and the total votes cast, just to compare the, the main. Election and the fall to the municipal elections in the spring. So you can see that, you know, in every precinct, the yellow lines. So you can see that, you know, in every precinct, the yellow lines denote precincts, so they don't really align up with the wards so much. But in every precinct, the people that vote in the general election for president is many times higher than people that vote in the municipal elections. So you can talk about trying to make the wards, you know, different, but really if you want to impact who gets elected, you just need to get more people out to vote because in any one of these wards, you know, if you could get an extra hundred people out, I mean, in, you know, these buyers are proportional. So there's like fourteen hundred votes, sixteen hundred votes in this precinct, and fewer than three hundred people voted. And this is registered votes, this is actual people that voted in the presidential election compared to municipal elections. So next, I just wanted to go through on a live map and show you some of the more interesting changes. Hope I'm not taking too much time. Can everybody, everybody still see that okay?
No, we're not, you stopped sharing your screen though.
Oh, sorry, let me try that again.
We can see that now, Bill.
Okay, now you can see that. Okay, so this map is a live map, you can just go in and like, ISR is the big one. Click on it, you can see what twenty-twenty was, the change, it's down six hundred and ninety-four people in that block. So that includes Townsend, Mordell, and some grad student apartments there. So by going, by using this and going through and examining the blocks at a closer level, you can get a pretty good indication of where the growth has been and where, where we might be able to benefit by recounting. I did want to talk just briefly about this area, One North and Capstone. It's supposedly down seven twenty, that's probably not too far off. In, in twenty-ten, the population was, they said was sixteen hundred people, and housing units were almost sixteen hundred. In that area, it's common, I think all of One North has, most of it is four-bedroom apartments, and they have addresses with A, B, C, D in the apartment because everybody can pay rent individually. And in twenty-ten, I think they each got there on census form. And according to the census form, you're supposed to fill it out for everybody in the household, which would be the apartment. So some of them were probably filling it out and got double counted by filling it out for everybody in the apartment. The actual housing units, four hundred and ninety-four is probably a lot, that's what was counted this year, I think. Last year was four hundred and ninety-four, that's probably a lot closer to what's actually there. And the population minus six may be down a little bit for the same reason the other student areas are down. But that's, it's, it's probably somewhere between nine hundred and twelve hundred, something like that. So that's, that's, you know, right away, that's a big part of the difference is there were a couple of places that were overcounted in twenty-ten. Another one was this area, I can't think of why it would have had, it has zero now, it's where O S F is. I can't think of why there would have been a hundred and forty-three people counted there in twenty-ten. I think those are the two main ones. There is a growth campus circle that was zero in twenty-ten, it's twenty, it's five hundred now. The retreat has started to got, get counted, but I, we don't think that that's really, it was only about half full or less when they had the census in twenty-twenty, so that one might be worth recounting. Actually do have some points of interest. Yeah, and then that one is the Gather Illinois in twenty, that was counted as twelve people in twenty-twenty, so that'll probably be up a few hundred if we did a recount once, it's all, I guess it's all rented now, so probably already three hundred people there. This is nine oh one Western, that was a positive, that went up. This was Hendrick, Hendrick House, it was three hundred and ten in twenty-twenty and four something. Yeah, four forty-six in twenty-ten, so that's down thirty percent. So I think a lot of the student areas are probably, seem to be down about twenty-five to thirty percent if they're heavily rental areas. So these purple areas are blocks that might be worth looking at to recount because they were down with more than twenty students or more than twenty percent for both. So if you add up all those and you add up some of the known ones like ISR and the new construction, comes out to a little over three thousand, maybe thirty-two hundred. So it could be pretty possible to get back up to where where we were and maybe a few hundred higher. So there, so basically there has been some growth because that makes up for the overcounts and adds a little bit more. I mean, I could go look at some other spots if people are interested, but I think I could stop for now and see if you have any questions.
Any questions for Bill? I know James has been waiting, then we'll do Grace and then Sharice. Go ahead, James.
Right, so my first question was the earlier, the, the very first slide had a comparison of population from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Was that twenty-ten number the number from twenty-ten, or was it the one that had been updated after the correction?
It was the twenty-ten census number.
Okay, so it didn't have the correction from like the Fuzland error?
It's the one that we'd been using as Urbana population, so I think it must have been the correction, yeah.
And then regarding, regarding drawing the ward map, is there any circumstance other than the twenty-twenty-five election that the ward map would be important for, say, for example, a council member moved early in their term, left the city. And we, it was early enough that we had to do a special election to replace them, would we have to have a ward map that reflected the decennial census for that special election?
At this point, I, I asked a similar question to I M L and apparently they don't think so, but that would be something we do need to confirm.
Right, thanks.
I just, the Fuzland error was actually in two thousand, so that's, that's, that's a pretty old error.
Oh, okay.
That was corrected like in two thousand and three or so.
All right.
Oh, Grace, go ahead.
Thanks for having us as a discussion item, and thank you, Bill, for the presentation. I was wondering if you could share those slides and web links with us? Thank you, and then
I, I can share the slides, the, the live map I have, I, I created. I'm a little hesitant to share just because it takes kind of the context that we're in the slides to understand, and if people don't understand the introduction noise and stuff, you can click on a block like on the quad that says there's nine people living there. And people might lose faith in the data, but I, I can try to update that map and maybe put up a splash screen or something to explain some of that and eventually share that, but for now I can share the slides.
Thank you. And then I was hoping to just recap and maybe Bill and the mayor, whoever else could verify that this is the situation. So I'm hearing that we're not sure if we're eligible yet for recount or the special census recount, but we will know our eligibility and more about the recent census data by November. Is that right so far?
I think this, there's two different kinds of special census, so the special census count that we pay for, we can do, we don't need permission for that, we just, we will need an estimate of cost from the Census Bureau, and they won't start doing it until twenty-twenty-three. The other one, that quality count, is one that, I don't know, Diana, if you've heard already, but it's, it seems like we probably won't qualify for that, but there may be a possibility.
It's unlikely that we qualify, but they're gonna notify cities that do qualify in December, according to the census bureau.
So that's for the count question resolution, but you're saying the special count, there's no qualifier, we just have to pay for it, right?
Right.
And so sounds like we're maybe wait till December, any way to hear about that and get more data?
Yeah, and one other thing I didn't mention is I'm not quite sure if you can count blocks individually or if you have to count block groups. I sent in a question about that, like when, if we do a special census, which would be still a couple of years away or a year and a half, we may have to designate which block groups we want to recount rather than the individual blocks. It'd be nicer if we could do the individual blocks because we could probably save some money that way.
Thank you, yeah, that was the next step of verifying that then after December, if we decide if we do the special count, probably won't qualify for the Q, for the C Q R one, then we would weigh the potential benefits and call, and if the benefits outweigh, then we could look into special recount for select areas by block or block group. And that we need to draw the ward map before spring twenty-twenty-four, with or without the census recount, possibly sooner if there's some other reason sooner. Cool, thank you, that's all.
Other questions, Sharice?
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Sharice.
Okay, I have a few questions because even though I, I work really hard to try to get everybody to, you know, do the census, there's a lot of things that I don't understand and and just don't know. So how will a, a block group census or a block, well, first of all, what's the difference between a block group and a block?
Yeah, the block is the really, is, is basically a city block, so it's defined by your streets, you know, that you live on. The block group is just some, several of those put together in a bigger unit, so
Like Ellis subdivision versus just one of the streets in Ellis subdivision?
Yeah, the, the block itself is, is actually defined by the streets as a border, so the, it'd be the street you live on plus the street, the people to the north you live on, you know, your backyard neighbors would be on the same block you are. But then you put like maybe six of those together. It varies how many, how many of those go together to make a block group, kind of depending on the population density and everything, but it's just another way to, the block groups originally when they were designed was to try to target about a thousand people per block group so that you could do relevant census statistics at a, a appropriate scale and get some good information out of it.
So a block group, just so I have this understood, a block group would be, for example, my street, my backyard neighbors or, or the, the backyard neighbors on the street over as well as the people across the street.
A block group, did you say?
Yeah, or that's a block.
A block would be every place you could go without crossing a street from your house. So if you go around the block, so that would be a block.
Okay, so it would be my backyard neighbors in my street on, on, on my side, south side of my street. So, okay, so that's a block group, okay. Now, a block is, would be considered my entire subdivision?
Yeah, you got it twisted around, the, the block is the small one, yeah. But a block group would be, the, the block group would be subdivision scale, but it may not exactly be your subdivision, it may split your subdivision in half.
Okay, I just wanna kind of get an idea. So my other question is, now that I have that, how will the, the, if we do a special census, how will that affect the already certified redistricting in Illinois that Illinois has accepted?
Yeah, it wouldn't affect that.
It wouldn't affect that, okay. And as far as, and you kind of answered this during your presentation, as far as doing the special census regarding how we would count U of I students in, would it be beneficial, more beneficial for us to, to count from fall of twenty-twenty-two and the spring of twenty-twenty-three? If that, if that is even possible, I don't know. Or would it, would it be just beneficial for us to start in spring of twenty-three, like in March, up until the end of the semester?
Yeah, from what I understand, they aren't taking any applications or any, you have to get an estimate of cost from the Census Bureau, and they have to schedule people to come out and help do it and organize it. We do pay people or we don't, but they used to have the city pay them, but now they just have city reimburse the Census Bureau, but we do have to help recruit census takers. So all that'll take some time, so I doubt if we'd be able to start in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. It might be in the fall of twenty-twenty-three or potentially spring of twenty-twenty-four. And ten years ago, when they were doing special census, they said the turnaround time, once it finished, it takes about six weeks to do it, depending on how big of an area you have, but then the turnaround time was about ninety days, you would get numbers back. So if they still can do that, it seems like it would be in time to redo the wards.
Okay, and as far as you were talking about the count, a lot of the places that you named were in my ward, so I'm very interested in would we do basically a block group count for Capstone and One North and the Retreat? Is that how that would go? The other thing, because we also have One South and One North, I don't know if those two are, are kind of related in any area, but I, I was also thinking about the Lakeview Terrace area, I think that's what it's called, where it used to be Lakeside Terrace is now their other apartments, Crystal, what's it called, Crystal View?
Crystal View.
Okay, so I'm just like mixing them up. I got a thick view, but yeah.
Yeah, Crystal View is actually up because I think in twenty-ten it wasn't quite full yet, and so they were still kind of finishing up Crystal View in twenty-ten. So that area was up, the Kerr Avenue, the new development on Kerr Avenue, Highland Greens, that contributed. Those I don't think you'd have to recount, those seemed pretty, pretty good. The atrium apartments was another one that had an overcount in twenty-ten, that was another one that rented out by the bedroom. Those, I don't, it might be worth recounting, you know, there's a lot of units there, it would probably be expensive to recount those, so we'd have to take a closer look at those. Try to estimate the undercount a little bit better, maybe by going, by estimated student population in those areas, things like that. So I think those, the One North is kind of an open question, One South, that block was down forty-three, which was only twelve percent, so. Yeah, some of those, I think if it's, you know, if it's ten percent down, it's gonna be kind of tricky to figure out if it's worth recounting, because you know, it could also, could also come out lower if they happen to have a low occupancy here, or you know, in some of these areas, if the new buildings are drawing people away from some of the other buildings, we want to make sure that we don't recount someplace that comes out lower. So I, yeah, I think, you know, that's a good question on some of those, but One North definitely, we expected to be way down because of that over, suspected overcount last time.
Okay, and, and I guess the other thing I wanted to know is is there an estimated cost for this undertaking and how much that might possib, how, how, how much it could possibly run? Maybe you've been giving me an overestimation of how much that
I don't know, I mean, I've seen, I think Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I've seen, I think uh, I think Gabe mentioned that a couple of towns did partial recounts. That cost a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand, but it really just depends on uh how much you have to recount, I would expect ours to be higher than that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, one more question, Mary Alice.
Um, yeah, so Sharice had the the question, I'm wondering if anybody knows how much we paid for the last time that we did the special recount?
I don't know up hand, it was a long time ago, salaries for enumerators are a lot higher now.
Yes, um, and then. It remind me, I think when we had talked about the census and we talked about the university housing. Does the university provide the counts for their residential places, so? The count for ISR and those places we can officially get from the university rather than having to go there?
That, that's what uh they do for the decennial census, yeah, I should have mentioned that, so. So like for FAR and and all the, all the uh housing. The residence halls actually had people in all the group quarters, those are considered group quarters, that um. Had people in it, the university turned those numbers in in March, so we're pretty confident in all those numbers. FAR PAR block is almost the same as it was ten years ago. It's the ones that are private housing and the apartment buildings where the undercounts were. And then for the recount, it, that's another question that um I'm not sure about, but from what I understand for the recount. They might not do that, so for the, if we did a recount of ISR, it might have to be each individual entering their data. Online or with a form, so we'll have to figure that out. Um, it would have been a lot nicer if the U of I could give us those numbers, so there may be some hope there, I don't know.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking, if we can have you, I mean, because ISR was was in, um, they're redoing it, so it was totally closed. But you know, they can give us the numbers, or Hendrick's House, since it's group quarters, can give us the numbers rather than having all those people fill it out, I think it would. Decrease our administrative costs significantly.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we'll keep you posted as we go forward, um. Wayne Wayne Williams did suggest that we might wanna have a redrawn map based on the twenty-twenty census, keep it in our back back pocket. Um, have it available if we need it and approve it, but with the hope that we get a special census and then tweak it before we actually. Um, go to approve it, so we still have some options to think about, but I just wanted to have you um at least get. A peek at some of the um high-level uh information, and I really appreciate Bill putting this together. This is a really good start for us.
My pleasure.
Cause he loves.
Nice to see everyone.
Nice to see you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, um. We will, last item on the agenda, we'll move into our closed session. Um, just a reminder, after the motion is made and we vote on it, you'll uh exit from this Zoom meeting and. Kate Levy will have sent you a link to the closed session Zoom, and we'll see you there, so I'll need a motion. To go into closed session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining issues pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two C two.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session um based on collective bargaining issues pursuant to five ISCS one twenty-two C two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second by Sharice, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Will?
Yes.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Evans, I believe you're still muted.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quiz and Mary?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right, we'll exit this meeting and uh join the others, and thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to end the closed session.
Move to in closed session.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, second by Mary Alice, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Will?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Evans? Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quiz and Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes, and with no further business before this council, Bill adjourned, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everybody.